Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation on earth, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'd like to welcome everyone here to the meeting. First item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. Is there a motion and a second to approve the agenda as posted and sent to the news media at least 24 hours prior to this meeting?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Kevin. Second by Barry. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. The council workshop report is next from Monday, July 8th. Those are your green sheets. If anyone wants to see it, it is on the website and you can always take a look at it after the meeting, but we're not going to be reading that this evening. Next, we have the public comment period. There is none registered in advance. Does anyone here have a, I guess, a public comment? Okay, seeing none. Continue on. There's no public hearings this evening. There's no old business. Under new business, there is consideration of awarding the July 2024 Image of Pride to Brian Tolsted and Laura Piper for property at 317 North Federal Street. We did informally, I guess so to say, took care of that on, at the workshop on Monday, but we would need to make an official motion, which I would move that we do award to the, to Brian and Laura. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a second. If there's no discussion, we'll just put it right to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Again, I'd like to congratulate the two of them. Okay, next item is the approval of the claims as recommended by staff in the amount of
Bill moved.
Okay, moved by Bill. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Barry. To approve the claims as submitted by staff in the amount of $224,474.97. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, this is probably for Doug or Ron. We just discussed the handicapped rumble strips. That's like 600 bucks a piece. Is that, is that the common price?
Everything's going up.
Or can you?
Are you talking about the panels?
Yeah, I've seen some that are rubber.
There are some metallic ones and then there's fiberglass ones. We buy the metallic ones for the downtown commercial areas or the highway corridors because those are typically cleaned by a skid loader. And then we use the fiberglass ones in the residential areas and those are a little cheaper.
So are they, how are they held down?
Basically, you stamp them and you put them right down into the concrete. There's a little lip on the bottom of them and then you finish the concrete, just tight up next to it.
Okay. Yeah, I just thought that's a lot of money.
Yeah, they're expensive.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any other questions or comments on the approval of the claims? If not, is there a motion and a, oh, we already got the motion and a second, right?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. And I also voted in favor. The next item would be consideration of approval and adoption of resolutions and ordinances, but there are none on the agenda this evening. That leads us to the consent agenda for the approval of the previous minutes as drafted from our Thursday, June 27, 2024 regular session. Schedule the next regular session for Thursday, July 25, 2024 at 6:00 PM at the Hampton City Council chambers and to approve alcohol licensing for Family Dollar Store, number 32965 of 411 Central Avenue, West Hampton, and Pitt Row LLC, 19 Federal Street, North Hampton. And that's a regular renewal and outdoor service application. Okay, is there a motion and a second for the approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Okay, Kevin, and a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Pat. Okay, we'll just put that to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Can we ask a question?
Oh, okay, sorry, I guess I, we could do that, sure.
Didn't know where, it fell in order there. The outdoor service application, is that a new application for Pitt Row?
I don't know, I just read what was on that. So, Kelsey?
I believe it is for something coming up that they are having going on.
So do we not get to see a plan or why we're approving this or?
Yeah, if they're intending on asking for a street closure, we will, we will have that in front of us.
But if they're asking, so why do we vote on that tonight?
Is it for their outdoor serving in the rear, do you think?
I'm not sure what it's for.
I'd like to wait and vote on that when we know what it's for.
I think this is for the ADA or the ABD, so it's kind of a rubber stamp thing that has to be done and if they want to close the street, that will go for that after.
Yeah.
Yeah, we really don't have any say over, over granting this. They've gone through the paperwork with the state and again, I think like you said, Kelsey, it's more of a rubber stamp, but I think if there is anything outside, they are definitely going to have to get our approval for it.
I think their outdoor service thing is a cage out back.
That's what I was wondering.
That could be.
Actually, I think the law is they are not supposed to take drinks out there. You're supposed to go in and get them and take them out there, but that's what I think it is. Now, I, I know Jen and Tom, I can ask them. I don't see any problem with it, quite frankly. We've never had a problem with that business.
Well, I guess my question is, if it is for that, I know that when you apply for alcohol licensing, you have to supply a diagram and everything and where the exits are and all that stuff.
Well, they supply it, I think, to the state for where, like where it's at inside.
So when we approve alcohol licensing, do we never get to see that?
Usually not.
No.
Usually not.
Really?
Okay. Kelsey, I would ask you, this renewal, when it says renewal, is it renewal both for the regular license and a renewal of the outdoor, do you know? In other words, this isn't the first time that, is it the first time or not that they've actually included this outdoor service on the application? Sorry for putting you on the spot, but.
I don't know for sure, but I think it's a separate application and guessing it's for a certain amount of time and it's not, but it can be less than a year or a month, but I'm not sure. I have the expectation of those that.
I guess I kind of want to know what it's for.
If that business is in my board, I'll call Jen or Tom and ask them, but I, I don't see any problem.
I don't have a problem with renewing their alcohol licensing for the bar. I just want to know what the outdoor service thing is for. And if nobody knows, I think it's kind of weird to vote on it and approve it.
Personally, I don't see any problem with it.
If we denied it tomorrow, they'd go to the state and get it approved. So I mean, it's a, a rubber stamp would be the best thing to say, is just to let us know this is being done.
But we don't know what it's for.
Well, it's for the outdoor service area.
So what are your concerns then, just the fact that you don't know what it's for?
But we're all guessing that's what it's for, right?
Kelsey, can you call back? Thank you.
I mean, I, I just want to know what it's for.
Okay, well, Kelsey, let's just temporarily, just set that aside and just move on to staff reports and we'll come back to it.
Yeah, okay.
Thanks.
Okay, so let's move to staff reports and Mark?
I won't be able to cover for too long because mine's pretty short, but it's fair week, so it's busy. Along with our regular duties, we have a lot of stuff going on out there with traffic control, accidents, all kinds of stuff. So I just, with the increase of people, increase of calls, so we're always busy with that. And then I just wanted to update a few things on nuisance. We did tow a couple cars out to Dumont and we have one set to go again on Monday, so there'll be three cars this week. And then we got three court orders through Taylor Niederhoff's attorney firm down in Iowa Falls, so things are starting to move forward a little bit there. So that's good to see. That's all I have unless there's questions.
Go ahead.
Did we have very many complaints about littering and kids in the street from the parade or anything?
No.
So it was just ones that people just reached out or friends said something, nobody actually came to the.
We had no calls.
Okay. I was just curious, I just had some concerns for kids, children's safety running in the road and a lot of litter being thrown around in the street from the candy and everything, so.
Yeah, and this year, they brought the street sweeper out to try to do the best we could because in years past, that has been a problem with candy wrappers and a lot of excess candies thrown and kind of left on the side of the roads too. So they tried to do that a little bit to combat some of that, but.
Did you guys notice a lot of wrappers and stuff in the road, being that it wasn't too windy where they were just kind of sitting there or?
Well, there was wrappers, there was some confetti, there was a few odds and ends, but it was pretty warm that every year. I wouldn't say it's a big worst time in half a year.
Okay, thank you.
A lot of times it ends up between the curb and the sidewalk and a lot of homeowners end up picking that up unfortunately, but.
I did have, I did hear some complaints about kids in the street and I was going to talk about that at the chamber meeting, even though the chamber put out, do not throw candy from.
The float.
Floats. They did it anyway, especially the big industrial tractors and stuff. And that's frightening because the kids do run out in the street to get that. So, but we, I was hoping to talk about it in our chamber meeting on Monday.
You have any plans to tow any tractors?
We have still a notice out and a citation ready, but if you're talking about the one that's in the southeast, it, we have not been able to serve them. That is the hang up there. They, they say they live there, but they don't. They live somewhere in Minnesota and so you have to try to catch them at the property. I can talk to Megan Rosenberg and see if we can do notice by paper, see if we can go that route. But the hang up, the citation sitting over here, that's what we're waiting for.
I got something else I could talk to you about after the meeting.
Sure.
Okay, anything else for Mark? Okay, thank you. Kelsey, do you have a report?
Becky said it was for outdoor on the alley side, so on the backside of the building. They've had it before. She said that they will have another event coming up later in September where it's on the street side, but that will go to the council meeting in 27.
Thank you, Kelsey.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's go back to that. Are you satisfied with that answer, Jerry?
I am, thank you.
Okay, great. Okay, let's go ahead and we'll put it to a vote. We did have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Good, thank you. Thank you again for bringing that up, Jerry, and thank you, Kelsey, for finding the solution or finding the answer to that. Okay, we'll go back to staff reports. Mr. Tarr.
Mayor, council, yeah, we, like Mark said, we tried the street sweeper at the end of the parade this year and doggone, we got about two-thirds of the way and it overheated on us and we shut her down. But the guys did try to get some of that picked up this year. It was fairly normal. It's normal to have some of those candy wrappers and, and I think some of the horse excrement and a few other odds and ends, and I think it's just been pretty normal over the years. We, other, other items that staff's been working on, we're still working on a couple damaged trees from the storms that we've had this year already, and I think that's going to get tied up. I think the last one is tomorrow that actually has a pretty large split through it. And then we had a meeting today because we want to start going into our concrete work for the year. One of the other things that was done was we, we had a hard time. We used to have FS do some spraying for us at the old concrete plant years ago because you'd get weeds and grasses growing up back in that area. And I reached out to FS, they won't do it anymore. And then I reach out to a couple other places and right now, I'm still waiting to hear back from a co-op up in Thornton that might help us out with a, with a bigger sprayer, with an ag type sprayer that can spray in just a few minutes, which is a lot cheaper and more affordable than trying to do something on a smaller scale. But the guys did go up there with the Batwing and got things knocked down this week and it looks way better than it, than it did. Actually, it's kind of looking like it's getting some good ground cover started out there, so that's good. Other things that, you know, we're still working on the mapping project at the water department. It's been fair week, guys have been busy. I've had a lot of vacations here and there. We did have an issue with part-time seasonal mowers that they didn't understand where the boundaries and the property lines were up at Progress Park and they mowed behind the tennis courts, which was actually private property owner, made the property owner very upset. I was able to talk to him just before the meeting and apologize. I've had my conversations with staff to let them know, but basically they were asked to go mow Progress Park and they were two of the young high school kids that are working for us. And anyway, they, it was just kind of a learning lesson, so to speak, but we will make amends with the property owner there and take care of that, try to straighten that out. And we're just going in a lot of directions. Had, I don't know, maybe a dozen or so rental inspections today. They didn't go very great, but we keep digging in on those. You know, it wasn't because of the landlords, it was because of the age of structures and certain tenants take care of properties in, in a different, different manner sometimes, so. But we've had a lot going on and we got court coming up next week. I'm pretty excited to get in there, meet the new magistrate and looking forward to still digging in on our nuisance issues and, and some of our dangerous structures and structures that just need a little TLC and talent, so. Other than that, I'll entertain any questions or concerns you guys might have.
Go ahead, Barry.
Yeah, I had a complaint. They, they're doing some remodeling at Steve Pearson's old office.
Yes.
And I don't think they're containing the dust. I think they're just throwing stuff out the window into a trailer.
Okay.
And someone walked into it and they were a little upset.
Okay. I, I don't know what I could do about that, but I mean, I could have a conversation.
They need a chute or something to contain the dust.
Well, I, I gotta have something that helps me enforce that, but yeah, I don't know if we have that in the books or not. I'll have to look into it.
Is asbestos going in that trailer or?
Right, it's a private project, so I guess I don't know, Barry, I'd have to look into it.
When you do those rental inspections, is a rental property required to have off-street parking?
Not in the rental code, no, but I believe that we have parking requirements for properties.
Because a lot of those properties, all the cars are sitting on the street.
Yep.
Another thing is, did you ask Liquid Grower to spray that?
I did. I had a conversation. They weren't interested. Who?
Jay Bane?
Jay Bane. I didn't talk to any specific person. I can't remember who came from there, but yeah, I had someone come down and, and they just said they weren't interested. I think they're afraid of the drift, some of them.
Can you get it some more times for Pat and I to have finished up the facilities tour?
Sure. Yeah, we can come up with something. We'll just have.
Give me a day's notice.
Well, we can do that, but I mean, maybe if you guys just tell me when you're available, I'll try to make us available.
Usually I'm available anytime there's a council meeting.
It'd work real, okay, so like before a council meeting night or something or?
You know, during the day.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, that'd be.
On a, on a Thursday?
Yeah, that'd be good.
Okay.
And after the meeting, I got a couple things to talk to you about.
Sure.
Nuisances.
All righty.
I'm kind of curious, when are you going to spray for mosquitoes again?
Uh, next week. We sprayed this week, we sprayed, I can't remember if it was last week or two weeks ago.
Did you spray last night?
Wednesday night.
Wednesday night.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why I thought I heard the truck go by, okay.
Um, we did, one of the machines did break down though, so we're waiting on a part, but we were supposed to get the part tomorrow, hopefully tomorrow.
Well, they went by my house like four times.
That's good. I hope they go down every street four or five times. You know, here's the deal on that, I, I've heard the complaints a little bit. I understand, but what people have to realize is we're actually kind of at a normal year for mosquitoes. We've been really lucky the last three, four, maybe even five years because the drought has really kept the mosquito population at bay, but with all this wet weather we've had in June, we're going to struggle and we're going to, I'll just, you know, we got to be honest about it, we're going to struggle because a mosquito can travel up to 13 miles. They don't spray out at Beets Lake, they don't spray in the surrounding areas, so any place there's standing water.
Yeah.
Within 13 miles of us, we're going to still get those mosquitoes, but we'll do what we can here.
And I live along a creek, so I mean, they're going to, you know, when we have the rising water, that pounded in certain spots and.
Absolutely. Even though we spray, it's not 100%, but we're going to do the best we can with what we got and we'll give a heck.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? All right, you're free to go, Doug.
Thank you.
Ron, do you have anything for us tonight?
We were originally supposed to have the approval of the contract and bond on the Water Main Project that was scheduled for this evening, but the contractor didn't get his bond returned from the insurance company in time. So that'll be at the next council meeting. And then at the next workshop, we should have an engineering proposal to review for the handling of the pharmacy project. So it'd be good to, to get that in front of us. And yeah, the mosquitoes, I guess I would just remind people that spraying does not eliminate mosquitoes. All communities are dealing with it and, you know, even though you spray, you still have mosquitoes. Iowa Falls, I know someone that lives in Iowa Falls and I was there one evening when the sprayer went by and I mean, it was a fog for 20 minutes and immediately after, the next day, the next evening, you can hardly be in your backyard because the mosquitoes are so bad. So spraying does not eliminate mosquitoes, we just need to remind people. That's all I have unless anybody has any questions.
Have the, have the people that own the building next to the pharmacy, have they been served with any paperwork yet?
The attorney advised me that it was sent, Bill, via mail, so I don't know if they received that yet or not.
Is there a preliminary estimate for the cost of shoring up that pharmacy?
No, no, that's, first, we're, we're, we're looking to get a proposal from an engineering firm to start to be, you know, they got to be, have an agreement in place to do the work, to put together, to do the inspection and put together a cost estimate, so. Not yet.
How much did we budget for that?
I think in this fiscal year, a hundred thousand dollars maybe. But, and then we've also got verbal approval on a state catalyst, emergency catalyst grant for the property, but we can't really do anything with that until we have a plan in place and numbers and so.
Thank you.
That was my question about grants on.
Yeah.
Cleanup and stuff, so, okay.
Isn't there another possible 50,000 also?
Yeah, that, so that catalyst grant is at 50,000, but I explained to them that it's actually two buildings, so I'm hoping we can get two grants, so.
Yeah.
Is that a match, matching?
It is.
To, like 50/50 match or something?
Dollar for dollar, yeah, yeah.
Anything else for, for Ron? Okay, we'll move on to council. Were you done? Sorry.
Yeah, I'm done.
Okay, we'll move on then. Council reports, Kevin?
Uh, no, I don't really have any. I got the questions answered from the guys, so thank you.
Great, okay, Barry?
I'd just like to comment on the Image of Pride. We're trying to tweak it and include everybody. I think that we're going to destroy the intent of it and if we're going to go year round, I think we ought to turn it over to the chamber or some other group to, to take care of it. You know, the chamber's giving chamber bucks anyway, but it's just more work for staff if we do it 12, 12 months out of the year. So that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Bill?
I have no report.
Jerry?
I know you've been dying. Back on the mosquito thing, and I don't want to milk this baby, but following up with the citizen that was concerned that we should have started earlier. I got information from Doug on that. We put Larvicide out on 624 and 78 and this is to destroy the larvae in the water, the stagnant water, and then the city sprayed mosquitoes on 626 and 79. I also went to ISU's extension website and learned that the mosquito's life cycle is actually four stages and the first three stages are in water. And I think this provides Hampton citizens a tremendous opportunity to help us out with controlling mosquitoes by making sure there is no standing or stagnant water on their properties. The city can't go into private properties and treat that water. We all have to be individually responsible for that. I also learned though, that mosquito season in Iowa is from May through September and this leads me to agree that perhaps with the, with the citizen that said we should have started earlier, that maybe we should start a little earlier treating standing water with this, if there is any. I took my turn at watering the downtown flower baskets with the assistance of my granddaughter. She was super excited about it, she had a blast, and I hope more people step up to help with this project. It takes about an hour out of your life and it's a feel-good hour. You get lots of warm fuzzies as you give back to your community. And thank you so much for stepping up and helping me, Bev. We're going to do it Monday night together. Mark's a little worried. In closing, I would like to share how proud I am of Hampton. This past week, we hosted my stepson, his wife and two daughters. They're on vacation from teaching in Thailand and they've never been to Hampton before and they fell in love with Hampton's slower pace. They both grew up in the Houston area and now live in Bangkok, both crazy hectic, loud places to live, and they just loved the slow pace and the quiet in Hampton so much. They love the openness and friendliness of Hamptonites. I rented an Airbnb for them to stay out at Beets Lake, a little treasure that very few people know about. It's the cutest, quaintest little cabin out there and it's an Airbnb and very reasonable rates. They enjoyed their morning lock, morning walks every day along Beets Lake and the relaxing atmosphere. Their granddaughters had, or my granddaughters had a blast at the fireworks and at the fair parade and they're ready to move to Hampton when their dad's ready to settle down. And that's all I have.
Great, thank you. Pat?
Yeah, I'm, Jerry and I probably have the same problem with mosquitoes because we both live along a creek. And when the creek rises, it floods her yard, floods my yard. And if her yard's like my yard, there's about three or four low patches in it where stagnant water sits. Right into my backyard across the creek, we used to have a real troubled property. We were always there serving notices and whatever, and that whole area is wooded and probably nothing but swampy area. So I know that that really has to be a breeding ground, but yeah, if we could start earlier on that, that'd be great. I probably get asked once a week, when are they going to spray for mosquitoes? So anyway, that was the story on that. Like I said, got my share of fireworks complaints, nobody really had a solution that was viable. Next time I'm in Charles City, I think I'll stop by City Hall and see if I can roust up a mayor or a city council person up there and they have the same ordinance pretty much we do, so I'm going to see what their solutions are.
Where at, Pat?
Charles City.
Charles City?
Yeah, they don't allow fireworks either. And so anyway, might talk to them, talk to some other towns. Fire truck looks great, thanks for shopping local, that helped to pay for that with the local option sales tax. Somebody's reached out to me about stop signs in the 900 block of, I think, 6th or 7th Street, 5, 6 or 7th Street, 6th? 6th. Anyway, long story short, they don't want to have a target on their back, so they've kind of dropped it. So anyway, I want to kind of look around there and see what we can see and she had all kinds of video and stuff and she didn't want to release it, so I'll drive around down there and see what we can see. But anyway, that was what she wanted at one time. The Image of Pride thing, I still think it's an honor for somebody to receive that from the city. I watched a guy almost move to tears the other night, accepting what I would say was Academy Award-winning speech for this, this award that we probably don't give two seconds of thought to. And so I still think it's valuable for our, our city to recognize in passing, you know, the, the new business, the new, you know, putting on an agenda item to make it worth something. So anyway, I'm, I'm for that, so. on an agenda item to make it worth something, so anyway, I'm, I'm for that, so, other than that, that is about all I have.
Okay, thank you, Pat, for my report, I took care of nominating the image of pride for this month, and yes, I was, he was just tickled, both of them, and talked to them later out at the fair, too, and they still were talking and talking about it, and happened to, you know, Jennifer Burnham happened to be out there, too, and so they talked to her, and so, yeah, that, I mean, it's really nice to have that, that good positive thing that went on there. I helped line up the fair parade, was in charge of making sure the fire trucks and the EMS didn't do like, a demo derby in the Trinity Lutheran Church parking lot, but I thought that went really well, and it's sort of fun to see what the other communities have for firefighting equipment, too. I was contacted about the mowing concern that Doug talked about at Progress Park, and I've talked to those people, too, so hopefully, I'm sure everything will be worked out fine there. I wrote this week's code counsel for the paper on the Hampton Public Library, that was sort of fun to do, talked to Susie about it, and just all kinds of good information about the library, and, yes, I've been working on like, a recommendation to council for like, when gifts are, when we're contacted for gifts, like memorial gifts, like to buy a park bench, we're looking at putting together some recommendations on that, maybe particularly for Banshell Park, so that'll be coming down the road, like to thank the, for Bill for working on that, too, appreciate that, and Barry, you know, you mentioned the building across from the Windsor, Steve Pearson's former building, yeah, because I think the owner is working, they've been working on that for about three weeks, and I know they put cones out in the parking area, and they are tossing things out, and I think it's actually the family of the owner of the building that's doing that work, and so, but yeah, they've been doing that, and then I've been talking to them about it, and they're going to be redoing that into like, three apartments, and so I was looking into some funding, too, maybe some grants to help them with that, not to take anything away from your concerns, but at least they're doing something, because I think that fire that took place there was twenty-ish years ago, and they hadn't done anything with it, so, it's nice to see them doing it, but safety concerns are also need to be applied.
I've got, I'll ask you a question about the lot next to, to the tennis court, didn't they have a rope up there at one time?
Yeah, it was up there, I believe it was taken down, yeah, but I think the new guys, yeah, this isn't maybe the first time that's happened, and being the tennis coach and been down there, I'm, I'm very aware of that situation down there, and have talked prior to this time with the property owners, too, so, again, I think we'll get it all smoothed out, it was just a mistake, and we'll make it right.
If anybody wants to mow my lawn for free, I'll take it.
Yeah, it's, it's sort of an odd situation, I thought for years, I didn't know that the city didn't own like, up to the crick, but that's not how the property lines run, so, anyway, and other than that, yep, I guess that's all I have, and so if there's nothing else, I guess we will go ahead and adjourn the meeting, so thank you very much for coming, and we'll go ahead and adjourn, thank you.
I just want you to know, your report was longer than mine.
Well, that's what I wanted to make sure of, that...